Would everyone bow for prayer, please?
Dear my Father, Lord, we just come to you and we thank you for this beautiful day. Thank you for all the blessings that you've given us. And we pray for the protection of our kids as they go back to school tomorrow. Place your angel on every door and window of those schools, keep them safe. Pray that you give us wisdom. Just pray for our community, let us make good choices. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. Okay, well, open the town council meeting for August the eighth, 2023. We're in at seven oh one. Will you call the roll, please?
David Kate.
Here.
Josh Tudor.
Here.
Jack Bonneker.
Here.
Gary Holbert.
Here.
Dan Wonders.
Here.
Has everyone gone over the minutes for July the eleventh, 2023? Are there any additions or corrections? If not, I would entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
So moved.
I have a motion by Gary. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Josh. Will you call the roll, please?
David Kate.
Aye.
Josh Tudor.
Aye.
Jack Bonneker.
Aye.
Gary Holbert.
Aye.
Dan Wonders.
Aye.
Motion carried. Has everyone gone over the minutes for July twenty-fifth work session? Are there any additions or corrections to those? If not, I would entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
So moved.
I have a motion by David. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Jack. Will you call the roll, please?
David Kate.
Aye.
Josh Tudor.
Aye.
Jack Bonneker.
Aye.
Gary Holbert.
Aye.
Dan Wonders. Aye.
Motion carried. Has everyone gone over the claims? Are there any additions or corrections or questions on those? If not, I would entertain a motion to accept those claims.
Motion so moved.
I have a motion by Jack. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by David. Will you call the roll, please?
David Kate.
Aye.
Josh Tudor.
Aye.
Jack Bonneker.
Aye.
Gary Holbert.
Aye.
Dan Wonders.
Aye.
Motion carried. Billing adjustment is for five hundred and six dollars and fifty-six cents. I would entertain a motion to accept this billing adjustment.
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion by Gary. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Josh. Will you call the roll, please?
David Kate.
Aye.
Josh Tudor.
Aye.
Jack Bonneker.
Aye.
Gary Holbert.
Aye.
Dan Wonders.
Aye.
Motion carried. The claim allowance. I would entertain a motion to accept that report.
I'll make a motion we accept that allowance report.
I have a motion by Gary. Do I have a second? Second. I have a second by David. Will you call the roll, please?
David Kate.
Aye.
Josh Tudor.
Aye.
Jack Bonneker.
Aye.
Gary Holbert.
Aye.
Dan Wonders.
Aye.
Motion carried. Main Street. Nobody? Fairwood, anything? Archway Days.
Evening, gentlemen. Thanks for having us. We're just a couple of weeks away from the thirty-fifth annual Archway Days Festival. This year is the biggest festival in the past decade. We have over a hundred vendors and lots of entertainment coming. What you have before you is a copy of our five-year plan that we have with you guys. Our theme this year is Big Hearts in a Small Town. And we're honoring Josh Millsaps, Virgil, and the Centerville Utilities for all the hard work that they do for our community. Also, Monday, the twenty-first, we will be spraying the park for bugs like we do every year. Just wanted to let you guys know that. Also, there is... Usually, we close the streets that are highlighted on Thursday at 5:00 p.m. There is a... Not a conflict, but another event going on in the park that night with the Christian church. And we have vendors that also come in that Thursday night to set up early, too. So that's one of the main reasons why we're here. See if we can come to a compromise with this.
What's going on with the Christian church?
They're having a concert.
Do you know anything, Dan?
It's a gospel concert. It's called...
My Brother's.
My Brother's Keeper. I think there's four, maybe five of them.
So...
They'll be up on the stage.
Stage and the concrete there?
Probably. I don't know. I know what's happening. I don't know. Just depends on...
I mean, their event that was out there on Sunday was a great crowd. It was awesome to see. And I'm like, Dave's kid was involved and some other folks. It was really a great, great thing to see. Awesome for the community. What contradictions do you see that being?
Well, we close off the park and the streets that are highlighted to help our vendors that come in early. And...
So you're worried about parking?
Yes, yes.
People parking in the way of...
Parking in the way of our vendors that come in early and us setting up.
So what if you just have them park at the church?
Or along the street, going up and down Morton or some of, you know...
Okay.
That may add... Because they would probably be through by, what, nine or ten?
I would say, I would think. Any comments or questions back there?
We're just a messenger.
Yes.
I just think if the church is putting it on, they can park at the church and then they'll stay out of the way of anybody coming into park. Unless it's a handicap thing or something, you know, and they need to pull down by the shelter. I don't know.
Okay.
Because I would think they would just have that one little area.
Okay.
And I'm sure the church crew is going to be more than organized to be helpful. I mean, it looked like they ran a great event on...
Have you talked to them at all?
I have not personally. I don't know if anybody else on the committee has or not, so...
I mean, you might talk with them, I'm sure.
All right.
Two can partner up and work it out.
Oh, yeah. We just want to avoid...
Conflict.
Yes. Do you guys have any questions for us?
Dan, you got any? Dennis? Okay?
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, next item we have is ordinance number twenty-three dash oh six, which is the transfer to the Rainy Day Fund. And it's on second reading. I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules and regulation and move to third reading and adoption.
I'll second that.
I need a motion.
You made the motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion. Gary seconds it. Will you call the roll, please?
Okay, David Kate.
Aye.
Josh Tudor.
Aye.
Jack Bonneker.
Aye.
Gary Holbert.
Aye.
Dan Wonders.
Aye. Motion carried. Will you read that by title only, please?
Ordinance number twenty-two-three dash zero-six, Town Council of Centerville, Indiana. Special ordinance to approve the transfer of fund balances to the Rainy Day Fund of the Town of Centerville, Indiana for fiscal year 2023.
Thank you. Motion carried.
New business, Christmas in Centerville.
Good evening. Thanks for opportunity to come up and speak. Will White has taken over the planning effort for Christmas in Centerville from here until further notice, I guess. Coming in tonight, one to, you know, our theme for this year is going to be a hometown Christmas. Trying to bring back the old-time feel to Christmas. Couple of reasons I'm here is request approval from the town to utilize the park on Saturday, December second. We'd also like to get approval to do a smores pit down in the park. Have a fire pit be contained in a metal drum. Have a small fire there for residents to go to make smores. We're looking at having the Boy Scouts run that if they agree to it. If not, we'll find the responsible adults to make sure that that is a safe environment. We're looking at doing a movie in the park right around the stage, probably towards the end of the event after the parade. We'll be putting up a twinkle tunnel this year as a new focal point down in the park along the path. And we will obviously be doing our parade. If you look on the last page of the handout of handymen, the parade route is highlighted in red. And we'll start where we had started the last few years on Crown Creek. And we'll head west. We're looking to extend the route over to Spruce Street and then head north to Main, back down to Fourth Street, and end on Crown Creek.
Ed?
No, I don't.
No problem. Dennis?
What time does the parade come to start?
Parade should start right at about seven o'clock this year.
Seven o'clock.
This seems to be the prime time where it's just dark enough. We're going to try to push the emphasis on a lighted parade this year to try to bring more decorations and have that Christmas feel apply to our fire department. Parkers seems to always have a good showing, but we're trying to bring back the emphasis on lighted parade.
What time do you want to start all the festivities?
We're still working on that. Last year, we did four to seven. We're looking at maybe going to starting at three and then in about eight o'clock. If we do a movie in the park, we need a little bit of time after that. Couple of other things that we would like to request, if possible. We're looking at decorating the overgreens along Crown Creek and kind of where I spoke with Kevin Slick. See if we have power on there and in the park for some of our decorations. And also, if we can have the restrooms, if they can be open during any event. See if we can find a way. I don't know if we can do some porta-potties because I solicited feedback from our community after last year's event via Facebook pages. And that was one of the big things is lack of facilities.
Worried about freeze and stuff. And so, I mean, being early or late, no matter what weather it is.
Porta-potties would probably be...
Porta-potties would be the thing.
I would entertain a motion on Christmas in Centerville's request.
I'll make a motion, Christmas in Centerville, September second, correct? Or December second?
One of the things we're trying to do is, and I know when Sherry spoke previously during the first Saturday of December every year, we're trying to work with the schools to align the sporting schedule where there's no sports schedule that day so that our community can gather.
Yeah, I have a motion by Jack. Do I have a second?
I second that.
I have a second by David. Will you call the roll, please?
David Kate.
Aye.
Josh Tudor.
Aye.
Jack Bonneker.
Aye.
Gary Holbert.
Aye.
Dan Wonders.
Aye.
Motion carried.
That's all I had. Do you have any questions for me?
Just updates when you know the details.
We do it. Thank you, sir.
Next time I have it, which is not on there, but we have a proclamation for the Centerville Christian, or Centerville Methodist Church, I get it right. And would you read that proclamation, please?
Proclamation by the Tent of Centerville, whereas the Centerville Methodist, as plausible as I can say that, church was established in eighteen-twenty-three by Israel Adams and was served by circuit writing pastors for many years. And whereas the first frame meeting house for the Methodist in Centerville was built under the direction of Reverend James Havens in eighteen-twenty-seven. And whereas the current brick church located at one-one-two South Morton Avenue, housing the Centerville United Methodist Church, was erected in eighteen-forty-two. And whereas in eighteen-forty-two, Circuit Writer, Reverend Joseph Tarkington, grandfather of noted Arthur Booth Tarkington, was appointed as the first pastor of the newly constructed Centerville Methodist Church. And whereas the Centerville Methodist Church was deeply involved in administration and education direction of the Willard County Seminary, later named Whitewater Academy. And whereas on this two-hundredth anniversary of ministry, the Centerville United Methodist Church continues to make disciples of Jesus Christ for this formation of the world, transformation of the world. Therefore, it has been resolved on the eighth day of August, twenty-twenty-three, that the Centerville Town Council officially acknowledges appreciation and congratulations to the Centerville United Methodist Church and hereby proclaims Sunday, August the twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three, to be the Centerville United Methodist Church Day in the Town of Centerville, Wayne County, Indiana.
And with that, I would entertain a motion to accept that proclamation.
So moved.
I have a motion by Josh. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second by David. Will you call the roll, please?
David Kate.
Aye.
Josh Tudor.
Aye.
Jack Bonneker.
Aye.
Gary Holbert.
Aye.
Dan Wonders.
Aye.
Motion carried. Would you like to explain some of your goings-on that you're going to have that day?
Sure. We're here.
Hit it, please.
It is Sunday, August the twenty-seventh, which is the Sunday of Archway Days. And we're planning on having a normal-type service. However, we're going to be served, first of all, by a circuit riding pastor coming in on a horse. I think it's something that you won't want to miss. And then, following the service, we will have a pitch-in dinner. You don't need to bring anything. We'll provide everything for you. But we would like to see a large crowd. Now, the church has a deep and interesting history here in Centerville. Whether you're a Methodist or not, you would get a lot out of the history that is involved. For example, it was mentioned in the proclamation that Centerville was involved, the Methodist Church was involved in the Wayne County Seminary, later to be called the Centerville Academy. I don't know if you know it or not, but there were four separate college presidents that either taught there or preached at the Centerville Methodist Church. One of them was Matthew Simpson, who was a preacher at our dedication in eighteen-forty-two. He went on, he was at the time president of DePaul University. Teachers at the academy, which the Methodist Church basically ran, there were a lot of trustees and so forth on the board. There was a man by the name of Samuel Hoshur, who was a teacher there. He not only was a, he was a Methodist, but he kind of got sideways with the baptism issue. Can you imagine that? Anyway, he went on to help found the Centerville Christian Church. And later in his life, he was then the, one of the presidents of Indiana, or Butler University. Yeah. And then, another teacher at the academy was a guy by the name of Cyrus Nutt. He went on to become a president of Indiana University. And then there was Abraham Shortridge, another teacher at the academy, went on to become the second president of Purdue University. So it's, and that's just touching the tip of the iceberg. There's much more that would follow that. And hopefully, you could, we can talk more about that on that day. But we invite all of you to come. It's on the twenty-seventh of August, Sunday. The circuit rider is expected around ten o'clock. Any questions? And by the way, we do thank you for this proclamation. We're very appreciative.
Honored to give it to you.
Okay, thank you.
And afterwards, stay, I got a frame, we got frame stuff. Billing correction.
All right, for the month, we had twenty-two building permits issued for a total bound of fourteen-hundred and four dollars. And on the code enforcement side, we had twenty-eight cases. Twenty of them were cleared without any type of enforcement. Two were cleared with enforcement, and then there's three still open, and two of them were unfounded. And total fines given was two hundred dollars.
Police Department? Hopefully, everybody's got my report now that he's got his. I just had a couple of things. Went to announce that we did hire our new school resource officer, Andrew Jordan. Andrew comes to us from Liberty Police Department. Andrew was the chief down there for about sixteen years, I believe, so plenty of years of experience in law enforcement. I think he's going to be a great addition, not only to our school system as being an officer there, but to the department in whole. He started, actually was sworn in yesterday and started today. And he'll be going around with Josh, getting more acquainted and learning the schools and everything. And then, obviously, when he's not in the school, he'll be working the streets. Look forward to seeing Andrew out. And then, I failed back in June meeting to mention that Josh did attend the training at the National School Resource Officer Conference up in Indianapolis. It was a week-long training. And he attended that and received quite a bit of training up there, so... We're going to be looking to send Andrew to get his initial training with the school resource program. Any questions for me? Thank you.
Hit it. Don't have one?
Oh.
I thought he did.
Okay, we've got the bid updated for the property at three oh nine North Fourth Street. And I believe you all have a copy of the bids. And I am going to request you take the lowest bid from Bond Drilling and Escavating at fifteen thousand dollars for the demolition of the building on property.
That's the same one that we had previously, wouldn't it?
Yes, the...
Held his price.
Held his price. The other two had slightly...
I would entertain a motion on accepting the lowest bid for the...
So moved.
I have a motion by Gary. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second by Josh. Will you call the roll, please?
David Kate.
Aye.
Josh Tudor.
Aye.
Jack Bonneker.
Aye.
Gary Holbert.
Aye.
Dan Wonders.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Water?
Please tell us good news.
We have water. Several months ago, when you approved moving ahead with the updates with the water plant or assessment, which it was eighty thousand five hundred dollars, we talked about taking two-thirds out of the recovery fund and a third out of the EDA. But there was never a final vote on how you wanted to pay for that. So I'm going to ask that you approved two-thirds out of the recovery fund and a third of it out of our EDA funds.
I'll make that motion. Got a motion by Josh. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Jack. Will you call the roll, please?
David Kate.
Aye.
Josh Tudor.
Aye.
Jack Bonneker.
Aye.
Gary Holbert.
Aye with a question. I always have a question. I've got your number, eighty thousand five hundred. I got the proposal in amount of eighty thousand five hundred fifty.
The final billing is...
Taking gas? The fifty dollars of taking gas.
Final bill is...
Yeah, final bill is, yes, you're correct, it's five hundred and fifty.
Okay.
Well, you meant your motion to make it five hundred and fifty.
I'm sorry.
No, you're right.
I amend this motion. I'll amend the motion, or I'll amend the motion to include the additional fifty.
If anyone in the crowd don't wait.
And you second?
With that, I say yes.
Okay. And Dan Wonders?
Yes.
Thanks, Gary. Along with that, while he's up there, we are looking at working with Lock Mueller and Baker Tilly with the SRF going in. We do need to talk to Bond Counsel on that. And so I'm asking permission for Ed Martin and I to talk with the Bond Counsel.
So moved.
I got a motion by Gary. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second. Jack?
Excuse me.
Will you call the roll, please?
David Kate.
Aye.
Josh Tudor.
Aye.
Jack Bonneker.
Aye.
Gary Holbert.
Aye.
Dan Wonders.
Aye.
Motion carried on that item. Got any more?
That's all I got for it.
Fire department?
I've talked to Richard. He thought there was some money left for the recovery money, so... We are needing to upgrade our security system at both stations. We can't do anything else with them. The software is no longer supported. So I've got quotes. The first one is for Station One from Spec Tech. It's two thousand three hundred and seventy-six dollars and forty cents to replace that system. And then, the second page is for Station Two, and that's one thousand nine hundred and forty-two dollars. And I would like to see if we could get the money to replace those with the new system so that we can, right now, I can't even program any pass cards or anything to give out for new people to get in and out of all the doors. So he came up and looked at it and said that it was not, there's nothing he can do for the system we have right now.
How much, how much did we have there?
Hundred ninety.
Seen what we got, because there are...
Should be a report. I'll get it to you in a while, but it's about a hundred ninety thousand.
That's in which one?
In the COVID recovery, the COVID. Which is what he's asking for.
And if you want to address it while we're talking about it, the next thing you have is some tech electronics. And being that everybody is upgrading their system, of course, the eight hundreds are changing theirs, too. too, and we need to replace ours. Ours were, two of them are the originals that we got from the county when they started the 800. One is one at the Sheriff's Department. We got from them when they upgraded theirs. And these are not upgradable, but we have to have them so that we can talk to the EMS agencies and if we need them for the police departments.
Where do you stand on yours?
I've got decent more checking, but I think I've got two mobiles to come out and replace. I just went to State Surplus last week, and I was able to pick up five used 800 megahertz radios for $25.
Are they, were they programmed?
Did you say $25?
And no programers?
That's unbelievable.
Can you pick up 11 while you're out at 3:00?
We picked the cream of the crop when we were up there. They didn't have a whole lot. And Icon Tech and Tech Electronics before I made the purchase, and he said, they're basically the same things that we're carrying now, and he said they are upgradable. I was going to have to get them reprogrammed and all that stuff.
That's a lot of money saved right there.
Are those ten which as well?
Yeah.
I mean, eight, $25, you just.
Five. You're lucky.
That's $16,000 here. How lucky can we get again?
I purchased five because I know of immediate need of two of them. So I could toss three of them over.
Again, we don't really have a date yet, right? We're still shooting in the dark of how soon everybody's going to go. But everybody is going to go, right?
Yep.
So, so I would think that this is, this is definitely an important issue, but not to address tonight. And then, and the other two would be total of about 40, $4,400, $4,400. The other thing on the bottom of the Tech Electronic was we need to add Union County Sheriff's Department to our radios because that's what Reed EMS runs off of in Union County and Reed up here and Richmond Fire. And we've had some down around the Brownsville area where we backed up Abington. Is that in need right now? It probably would be nice to have it as soon as possible because if we get a call with them, we can't talk to them.
Are those crystals?
Yeah, well, it's not crystals. They don't.
No, it's programmable.
We're back in the 70s now.
The red lines.
Our program, all this is, $25 is just what he charges to program.
Do you think they'll have, do you think they'll have any more?
How many radios do you want upgraded?
Soon?
Well, with the frequency, there's probably going to be 10 to 15 to do the truck radio, the least.
Less than $500?
Two truck radios on the squad. And then with the others, we're looking at just like with the 800s, we're looking at, right now, we have three portables and two mobiles.
Like I said, I got, I know of three extras that I could probably toss over, help them out. I don't mind doing that.
We would appreciate that. And then if.
I got them because the price was right. I was trying to grab up, thinking for the future.
So that would bring you up to speed. Along, along with the three, and then along with spending the minimal amount that you can approve or I can approve with this 25 per unit.
Yep.
Get all the units updated and then.
Just got to have batteries. Move that to lapel mics and chargers. And then it can be programmed, obviously. And IDs.
Probably will have that off of the old ones. Because the old ones are no use anymore.
There's at least two of them I know of that are fairly new.
That's, I mean, if Ed's optimistic about that.
That won't hurt you, Will, did?
No, I don't mind helping out. As much as I can.
So I would like, I would like to see that plan go forward. Thank you, Ed, and the Police Department for working along with the Fire Department. You and I can spend this $25 unit thing and on the, on the, on the door security, I believe, anymore with the way the world is. And I'll say this, I know that you keep the doors open during storms, but even like on meeting nights or other nights, I know you're cleaning and stuff, let's try to keep them closed as much as possible because the way the world is anymore, you don't know who's going to walk in, why they're going to walk in, whether it's a disgruntled person or, or just somebody flying off the handle. And that, and, and putting this new system in would help as far as I'm concerned with security anymore. You got to guard from the inside and the out. I would, I would like to see that done if the clerk thinks that's possible. So I'll make a motion to move with Spec Tech on those two. And then thanks again for Ed and work on spending the $25 unit.
You're fine.
Do you have plans?
I'll make a motion.
Gary. I got, I got a motion from Jack. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second from David. We call the roll, please.
David Kate.
Aye.
Josh Tudor.
Aye.
Jack Bonneker.
Aye.
Gary Hobart.
Aye.
Dan Wonders.
Aye.
And again, Ed and Dennis, you guys and Dan here, you're, you're on top of when this, maybe more so than me, or maybe he, more people know about this, moving forward to this encodment, what we're going to need if we need to.
It's been pretty quiet here lately.
Yeah, I mean, we did, you know, and, and the way it came for it might just drop right on the table right now. So if it does, I guess we all need to make a move on that, whatever's needed, but for safety, you know, for the community and the officers and the firefighters and the EMS.
Well, we, we had a prime example of why we need to communicate last Friday when we had the culmination of a Henry County pursuit end right out here on 40 with a roll of a crash. And how many agencies were involved in that? We got to make sure we can communicate.
Several.
All right. Just real quick, we've got a few recognitions we would like to do from a couple of calls we had. Anthony, if you want to come in and give the details or?
Sure. I was going to come, a couple of different capacities here, so. This is squeal. I'm like a dog right now. So I'm going to, if it's all right with you, I want to start with the non-Centerville Fire side right quick. So one of the other hats that I wear is with the Indiana Volunteer Firefighters Association. For those that don't know, my name is Anthony Smith. I am your District 13 B, District Chairman for the IBFA. One of my counties that I am responsible to cover is Wayne County. And I have had some years of service pins that I need to get passed out. Every time I've got the opportunity, the individual that I need to give it to is never there when I'm there or vice versa. And last night was going to be that prime moment to catch the one individual. However, our meeting was, you know, we were going really fast, trying to get a lot of things done last night. Completely forgot. So what better time than now? We have media here and a lot of other people to witness the recognition. So with that said, I would like to present Centerville Fire Rescue firefighter Kevin Branson with his 10 years of service recognition and pen.
Wow.
There you go. You guys can call for cameras. I'll shake your hand.
Kevin.
You got to smile. I'll tickle you. Thank you. Okay. So now that that's done, if you want more information, please go to www.ibfa.org for more information on that organization. Now coming to you on the Fire Department side, I first need to remind everyone to please change your smoke detector batteries at least twice a year. In the spring and the fall, please do not remove batteries when it becomes annoyance like that. Please AA battery. And just a PSA, Centerville Fire Rescue does offer through the State Fire Marshal's Office, free smoke alarms at no cost to you. So all you got to do is just get ahold of us. We'll schedule a day. We'll bring you a smoke alarm for almost every room of your house except your bathroom. So yeah, just give us a call, shoot us a message on Facebook, and we'll make that happen. July 4th was the first incident that we're going to discuss tonight. I feel bad because all the members that were on the call, they're not here. See what I mean? It's hard to get everybody in one place. So I have to catch them. We were dispatched to an area here in town for a unresponsive, not breathing, CPR in progress for a very young individual. Wasn't your typical cardiac arrest. Just traditionally, because of the age, you start taking your brain elsewhere in the emergency service world. This has got to be an overdose because it's a very young person. Unfortunately, you know, not trying to profile, but that's how most of them come in. But luckily, the case here was not. Our patient, without giving too much, had a, just a fluke. He had medical history unknown at the time. CPR was started, bystander CPR witnessed cardiac arrest. We showed up on scene, provided the same treatment, CPR with AED. We successfully delivered two shocks for the patient, and the patient's alive and well right now with follow-up treatment. So I've got life-saving, excuse me, CPR awards or certificates, rather, to give out for that event. And also 10 days later, the same exact crew, and I'll name those individuals here in a second, 10 days later, we were called for the same thing. However, it wasn't a 30, 20, 15, it wasn't a younger person. It was unknown at the time. Same thing, bystander CPR initiated. We arrived on scene and provided the same care that we did 10 days prior. That patient is doing better now. They are alive and soon to be going to a step-down facility and then soon after that to go home. So because of the care that was provided, not everybody is here, but I would like to give those that are here Tammy Smith her two certificates. And I'll just have them all come up as a group.
As a group.
As a group, that means together. Miss E, man two. Phil Beadle's not here, but deserves just the same recognition. I was there, but I'm not going to give myself anything. And the last individual is not here, and I plan on meeting up with him for the incident on the 4th. But his name is Billy Hampton, Centerville resident, lifelong, as far as I know. So he was the one that initiated the CPR on our first call. So if it wasn't for these guys and gals doing their job, the situation wouldn't have been much different. So if we can get somebody to play photographer here, I know we have a photographer in the room. I would like to get that out there as well, if that's okay. Thank you very much. Don't know.
I can torture you, okay? Like Kevin.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks, you guys.
That's all I have. Unless you've got something for me.
Anybody else on the council? I might add a word. I've worked with a gentleman during the election board several times. I remember him as a kid. I'd like to keep the Van Middlesworth in your prayers. Doug, our former honor judge here in Wayne County, just passed away this last week as well. So if you'll keep the Van Middlesworth in your prayers, that would be assuredly appreciated by the family, I'm sure. Thank you.
You think?
Underwater? I think we're good.
Waste water, stormwater?
Well, they've been out jetting lines and we've been cleaning out those stations, getting ready for one to come in. They've been very busy doing repair work on new pieces. Trash seems to be going fairly well. Everything's holding up. And that's about all I got on there. Unless you have anything for me.
Gary? I got a question. Are we going to think about where we're headed with a trash truck somewhere down the road?
That is in the near future. Discussion has eleven-early started.
And when this was done last time, and you had. I have other conversations on my exhibits, and I'll have them again as far as how it's done. Even if it's assisted, to help them guys out, you know, so. Safety, watch them guys on the road, please. They're really.
November school is starting, and we do pick up trash.
We'd rather have rainy day fun coming in.
Great stop.
Yeah, something will help, I'm sure.
Ready to skip the electric? Ready for me?
Ready if you are. You go ahead and take the wheel with that one.
Okay. We did have one outage, actually, last weekend. We had a capacitor fail, which took out a couple of fuses throughout town. And what a lot of people don't understand is we're feeding off two substations in Centerville. And when the capacitor went, we crossed our primary in our neutral, which affected both substations. But we were able to get the one back up and running almost immediately. The switches activated when it went off in the parts of town. We had the switches with a flicker, and they were back on. But it took us a little time to track down all the fuses once we found the capacitor. In the middle of the night and dark, it's hard to see a fuse tail hanging down. But we got that cleared up and taken care of finally. It just took us a little time to locate all the damage done when the capacitor let go. We're still replacing poles on schedule, placing animal guards, and taking care of all the service requests because they come in to the best of our ability. We do have, I believe Thursday will be our quarterly update from MP. So work session, we should have that presented to you. Things seem to be going well. The supply chain is starting to free up some. There are still some components that are very difficult to get. And I believe that's all I got. Unless you got anything for me.
I might make one comment. Friday, we'll meet here at the city building. Those that want to take the tour out here at the station on Gates Road in Richmond. And that, we'll go out there as a group and tour those. So if you can be here about a quarter of a line, we'll head out there. So that's all I have.
Our charging station is slowly trending upwards. You should have that information in your packet there. It is being utilized more month by month. And I don't, I haven't had any reported issues with it or anything like that. So it's slowly continuing to climb up.
Might add, we are having our two-year audit from the State Board of Accounts. That's going on right now.
How do you think about that?
I thought you all about that every day.
Very much. Yes. In your suite. Sometimes.
So let me make these announcements. Don't forget tomorrow is the first day of school here in Centerville. Please be aware of the buses and the children getting on and off. So and then the council's work session will be Tuesday, August 29th, here in the council room. Archway Days on the 25th and 26th. And then Labor Day, we, the office will be closed. And then we'll open back up on Tuesday, September 3rd. Don't forget your trash, it's on that day. It'll be the following day. So a lot of them sent them. So, a lot of them set them out for good. Then also, on September the twelfth, we will be having a public hearing at seven o'clock for the grant for the fire station. So, with that, I make a motion that we close the.
Do you wanna call your session?
Oh, yes, thank you. We will be having an executive session Thursday here in the council room at five-thirty. So, thank you, I forgot. With that, I would make a motion that we close the Centerville Town Council meeting for August the eighth, twenty-twenty-three. I have a second by David.
Slow play. We call the roll. David, Kate.
Aye.
Josh Tudor.
Aye.
Jack Bonneker.
Aye.
Gary Holbert.
Aye.
Dan Wonders.
Aye.
Motion carried and we thank you for coming at seven fifty-one.